Good morning, everybody. This is Pete Bellatorre coming to you from, of course, Doral and very happy and grateful that all of you are joining us this morning. This is an exciting time for the city of Doral as we roll out and share with you. And it is all about growing business in the city of Doral and surrounding areas. And all of you that are here today, I believe, will be a big part of what our mission is as an organization. And the bottom line is, is that we want to have a unified partnership with everyone, all the businesses, of course, the city of Doral. And moving this forward, we've experienced a very difficult time in the last six months or so. We're still going through a lot of issues right now. But all I want to tell you is you can count on us together with the leadership at the city to help you during this recovery and especially going into 2021 to help everyone get to that next level. And that's a big part that drives us as an organization here. And our values are very, very clear. It's all about integrity, commitment, hard work, and innovation. And the innovation is going to come as a collective effort with all of us here. And I think this is a special time, even though it is difficult. But I really, really believe and all of our panelists here will share that exact vision with everybody. Let me share with you what we plan to do today. After I finish with a couple of comments, I will be introducing the mayor of the city of Doral, Juan Carlos J.C. Bermudez, to hear his vision about the city and its business community. And then we'll get to hear from Joe Chi, who is the president of Camacol, a close to 60-year powerful organization here in South Florida. And then we will bring on Manny Pila, who is the economic development coordinator for the city of Doral, who will share some of the plans that we have in the short term and as we go into 2021. But some of you may be asking, why Camacol Doral and why now? As I just mentioned right now, the businesses have been devastated because of COVID, and we need to come together as a community. And I'm really excited, the fact that we're going to be working in unison with the city of Doral. And it's, I think, really, for the first time ever, this city, we're going to have an organization working hand in hand with the city. And that's going to, I think, allow for really good positive things to happen. This organization, Camacol Doral, will focus on Doral-centric programming. There are specific industries that drive the city. We want to highlight them, as you'll get to see a little bit later on in this program. And we're going to keep, we're going to look at the key industries, we're going to look at the business community, especially the small businesses. There are over 12,000 businesses here in the city now, and every one of them is very, very important, regardless whether they're large, medium, or small. We want to work together so that everybody has an opportunity, again, to get to that next level there. And it is, again, going to be focused on Doral and its surrounding areas. As the mayor knows, that I coined the phrase a few years ago, the greater Doral area. And that is exactly what we're going to be doing here today. And towards the end of this presentation, we want to hear from you. We want to get your feedback, because we're not going to work blindfolded here. Our mission and our programming will be based on what you need and how we can help you specifically during this time here. And that's going to be the spirit moving forward, that we're going to be working together. We don't have all the answers, but I think collectively, we can find things that will work for the benefit of everybody here. Without further ado, it is my pleasure now to bring on to the program our honorable mayor, Juan Carlos J.C. Bermudez.
Well, thank you, Pete, Joe, and Manny. Great to be with you today. I want to start by thanking Joe Chi and obviously Pete Bellatorre and Camacol, and now Camacol Doral, for the great initiative that you brought to our community. One of the things that I think is very important to me, and I think to the council, is that we have a true, as Pete said, historically long-lasting nonprofit chamber entity, which is what the city has needed, a true nonprofit that is committed to helping not only Doral but all of South Florida, and as Pete said, the greater Doral area. So I think it's a very exciting time for us. I think it's a great opportunity for our community to find a true partner that has a history of helping all of South Florida and helping so many businesses grow locally, statewide, and internationally. So thank both of you. I'm going to talk a little bit about first, the, our vision for what the businesses are going to go through in this COVID-19 period. And then I want to talk about the collaboration, which we're looking forward to with this organization. Number one, we, as all of you have known, this has been a very difficult time for all the businesses in South Florida, not just in Doral, with a rare exception. We have had impacts like everyone else. I, as mayor, have had the opportunity to be in meetings with Mayor Jimenez and a number of other mayors around the county on a relatively constant basis. In fact, today, the mayor will be making some announcements that will hopefully also open up opportunities for us to do certain things that were not permitted until this easing of restrictions, which will include, for example, some of the events that are taking place at places at hotels, et cetera. So this has been probably the longest year that I remember on record, even though I guess, if you look at the number of days, it's the same, but it just seems like it's, it's like the Groundhog Day movie, for those of you who go back a little bit to Bill Murray fans and know that it's over and over. We were faced, like many other cities, with many different issues, including reduced dollars coming in from where we received funds. So one of the things, and I do believe, by the way, I want to be very clear, that this initiative is important, not only for today, but also the years coming, the next couple of years, for sure, because our city will feel an economic impact. And when I say our city, I also mean our governments across the board will be facing an economic impact. We have been working, like I said before, through programs that we have instituted, including programs where we would feed people that needed, that did not have access to be able to go out and get their own food. In particular, we focused on the over 65, your senior club group that we have. We then expanded that to our residents. Today, we've actually started this past week some COVID testing for our residents, free COVID testing. And you may ask, well, how does that impact businesses? Well, one of the reasons we're doing it is because we want to make sure that our residents who need to get back to work are able to go ahead and get tested at no cost. And the businesses that are here in Doral that have residents in Doral can also direct those residents to be tested at no cost, so they can feel safe that they are going forward and are able to go out into the workforce again. We also have two particular programs that are very important for us that hopefully will kick off October 1st. One is a $1.5 million grant program to small businesses. The final, let's call it requirements, are being worked out at this point. And hopefully, that will be a help to our business. And I want to point out that this is aside from the county programs that may exist that Doral businesses can qualify for. This is in addition to it, but you have to be a Doral business. And we also have a $500,000 loan re, rent reversal program that certainly will help people to get through some of, some of the help that they can get to try to make sure that they can pay their mortgage annual, pay their rent. Those are a couple of programs. We've also continued to do many other things daily. I know Manny has been on the board and actually been making some decisions along with some of our partners at the state on some of the state programs that are given for qualifying for some of the loans and grants that come from, or have come about as a result of COVID-19. And at the same time, Manny's been doing a great job getting the information out to our residents in different ways, including how to qualify for some of these federal dollars. Now, we also have the Shop Local program, which we've definitely tried to expand in this time period, because now we want people to shop local. Very important for us is hopefully, we don't know what will happen in Washington. Everybody knows that, you know, there's 48 days till an election, but hopefully, we are hoping that there will be some sort of agreement in Washington where there will be funds directly to municipalities. And if so, we will be able to expand some of these programs at that time. Our collaboration with Camacol, I'm very excited about it. And, you know, I know that, I know Joe's going to touch upon this, and Pete, and maybe even Manny, but this is the first of a number of very important opportunities for us to discuss where we're going in these industries. And the first one will be October, the second one will be October 13th. They're all at 11:00 AM, 11 to 12. October 13th is hospitality in restaurants. And why is that important? We also have, on the upcoming agenda, a resolution to help our hotel industry for the next year, easing some of the regulations as to what they can do as a hotel as far as renting out for a longer period. And for the restaurants, we have already, we approved about three, almost four months ago now, and really expanded outdoor dining process, which over 50 restaurants have already taken advantage of, where otherwise they might not qualify for outdoor dining. We actually expanded that. It is my intention to keep that open at the very least through the winter of next year, even if we go into the final phase and go back to normal. Reason being, we need to get our restaurants back as much as we can to capacity. And I think that it would be the right thing to do that. On November 12th, we'll have the International Trade in Real Estate. By that time, hopefully, we'll know a little bit more, and we'll have more flights coming in from other parts of the world. And then on December 8th, we'll have the Healthcare and Technology Program with Camacol. I am very excited. I can't tell you guys, you know, Pete Bellatorre was with us when we had the Doral Business Council, which was a true nonprofit that worked very closely with the city. And now I am so glad that Joe and Pete took the initiative to approach us. And an institution like Camacol, which I have had an opportunity to participate with even founding at the city. In fact, Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, but their annual large event has taken place in Doral on numerous occasions, and I've had an opportunity to participate with people from all over, all over the Americas and all over the world. So I'm excited about it. I would tell our residents and our business community, I am looking forward to this partnership. I am looking forward to the fact that you, with Joe and his leadership at Camacol, and with Pete Bellatorre's experience and history with our city, helping us grow as we've grown, this is a very exciting time. So I know that this is just the beginning. And there's a lot of things that have happened in 2020 that don't, that have not made any sense, but at a difficult times come wonderful things, and this is one of them. So this is one of the great things that will happen in the city of Doral this year. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Fantastic insights and thoughts. The one thing that amongst all the great things you shared with us that stood out is the Shop Local program that's been in place for a while. I think that's taken even a greater meaning right now. And I believe that we really, if we're going to have economic recovery, it has to start in our backyard. And in our backyard are our brothers and sisters here that own businesses. And I just, just yesterday, I spotted three businesses that had closed down in one of the local shopping centers here, small strip shopping.
Pete, man, frozen on us.
You got to update your internet connection.
We've had some great conversations and it's.
He froze a little bit. Rising a little bit on us, Pete. Yeah. There you go. You're back to normal, Pete.
We got you. Okay. So Joe Chi, you're on the clock.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Bueno, primeramente en español, me gustaría decir una cuanta palabrita. Me llamo José Luis Chiá. Es el nombre que junto nací cuando, cuando vine de Cuba. Entonces, como presidente de la Camacol, me gustaría dar los saludos a todos los residentes de Doral y también de Miami-Dade County. Me gustaría especialmente darle las gracias a la entidad de Bermúdez por honorarlo a nosotros con su presencia en esta reunión, en este foro. I'll switch over to English. I'd like to talk a little bit about Camacol. Camacol is a, is one of our grandfather institutions. It's a, it was started by a group of Hispanic entrepreneurs back in 1965, who, similar to a lot of Hispanic entrepreneurs, came to our, are coming to our shores today, and they came to our shores back then, except for the fact that Miami today is a different Miami from then. The Miami back then, the Hispanic entrepreneurs, they came in from Cuba, from Central America, different areas back then, the earlier migrations, they came here and they came to a totally different world. It was an English-speaking world, and they came from a Spanish-speaking world. So it was very difficult for them to be able to engage in many of the processes that were necessary to succeed in this country. So that's why Camacol was started. It is, Camacol has become the largest Hispanic business organization in the state of Florida. It is one of the largest and most influential minority business groups in the United States. For almost six decades, Camacol's mission has been to sponsor the entrepreneurial spirit of Florida Hispanic and minority communities. And as such, it conducts programs to strengthen the local business activities and to promote economic development, facilitate international commerce, and serve the civic needs of the community in the state of Florida. Camacol works, of course, with the mayor there and all our community leaders and partners on local, statewide, national, and international level in order to ensure that our economy here locally grows and also the economy in Florida grows. Our programs foster job creation, retention, and development. That is one of the reasons, for example, that Camacol works very closely with Career Source Florida, which is basically our key factor department of labor here. And we've been working on quite a few programs with them, and we will, through Pete, in the near future, we will be talking about those and seeing how we can share that with Doral as well. Camacol also has something international. It's called the Hemisphere Congress. Through the Hemisphere Congress, a flagship program of Camacol, Camacol has provided businesses with the opportunity of establishing commercial linkages, not only in the domestic marketplace, but also in the international marketplace. The Hemisphere Congress is actually an umbrella organization consisting of the most important chambers of commerce in different regions of Latin America. And through this, as such, our mission at the Hemisphere Congress is to link businesses not only in Latin America, but throughout the globe. The Hemisphere Congress actually has branches and affiliations all the way in Asia, all the way in Japan, India, Korea, and all the way in Europe. For a very long time, Hemisphere Congress has been around for more than 30 years. Our European connections through Spain, Great Britain, Germany, Poland, to Central Europe are also very strong, which is, which has also enabled us to survive and also thrive during the pandemic in such a, in such a, in such an efficient and effective manner. We were able to actually see this pandemic starting over in Asia, in China, through underground connections, and see a move in this, toward this area, toward Europe, and then jump, jumping over to the Northeast, to New York, and going over to the rest of the United States. We're able to see the wave of this pandemic moving, and now it's in Latin America, where our brothers and sisters down in the south are really suffering from it. But as a wave, and if you look at the analogy of the wave, a wave comes and it passes. We are, we are very, we are very hopeful. And not only that, but we have also seen how this has passed Asia, this has passed Europe, and it will pass the United States. And I believe that at some point in time, it will finish passing here, and we will come forth into normality, albeit a new normality. Besides this, Camacol is also a mixture of thousands of businesses, economic development organizations, and trade promotion organizations, national and international chambers of commerce, including renowned Fortune 500 companies like Coca-Cola, Pepsi-Cola, and many others. And as well, we, but we also do not ignore the smaller startup firms, which is the basis of Camacol. Camacol actually started as a group of small grocers back in the old days, with our famous Luis Sabíniz, who was one of our most renowned presidents. He was a small grocer. And nowadays, Camacol counts with grocery companies like Publix, like Sedano's, like Natural Food, which is actually, which is actually one of the largest wholesale food conglomerates in the country with, I believe it's like about 20 or 25 billion dollars in sales. So Camacol also connects the smaller companies with the larger companies on a national scale as well. I believe that no other organization in the state of Florida has this established infrastructure representing companies, which serve not only the local market, but over 50 million Hispanics in the United States, and the Latin Chamber of Commerce is representing businesses that serve over 650 million Latin Americans in this hemisphere, not counting, of course, our long-established European connections to Spain and the United Kingdom. Camacol is committed to providing our members with greatly expanded opportunities, especially our members here in Camacol Doral, and Doral, which we are concentrating on very strongly through Pete, and also through Mayor Bermúdez at this time. One of the things that Camacol does is we encourage our members to participate in our networking events, our leadership opportunities. We have many different opportunities. For example, Camacol recently has been involved with the, with the Miami-Dade County Economic Recovery Task Force. This was a task force that was formed by the county commission at the behest of the mayor, Mayor Jimenez. And we have been, we have, we have been attending, and we've also been participating up to now in approximately 30 meetings. We are projecting that by the time the year is finished, we will have participated in over 100 meetings in order to deal with the economic recovery of the county. And our recommendations go directly to the county commission through our chairman of that committee, which is the Michael Finney, who is also the president of Beacon Council. Camacol, on a county level, works with the Beacon Council, of course, Career Source. We also work with the Greater Miami Convention and Visitor Field, and we deal with a lot of the restaurants and hotel issues, of course, which Doral has a good concentration of that. We also work with the Miami-Dade County International Trade Consortium. It's the official county body that deals with international affairs. Of course, that is also very important for Doral, because Doral has a humongous field of international companies and people from all over Latin America and all over the world, which work in Doral. So we are ready to help them. We're ready to work with them, not only on the Doral level, but on the county level, not on the Florida level, and international level as well. I would also like to mention that Camacol is also involved in many other fields. It's, a lot of times, when I look at Camacol, I look, I look at it like a diamond with many facets. Every time I look at it, I see something new. We have been working in collaboration with FIU with a series, a series, a very long series of seminars, across like 10 seminars, webinars, we call them nowadays. And we are also in the process of starting another group of seminars with the University of Miami as well. They, we will be announcing that very soon, Pete. Also, we are very, we work very heavily into the film and television industry through our digital media and Miami Film, MMFM, which is Miami media and film market. It is actually a market in which, for the past 10 years, we have congregated people, Academy Award winners, but these are people, not the stars, these are the people who actually work in the industry. Your directors, your producers, your camera people, and these are people who have won Academy, multiple Academy Awards, multiple Emmy Awards. People like Luis Sampedro, Sampedro, who I believe he won over 10, I mean, over 20 different Emmy Awards for his work with Sesame Street. We'll be doing a lot of work with him pretty soon as well, too. People like the Karen Hall, who was the writer for the largest, the largest grossing television program in the history of the United States. I remember, I hopefully remember a little program called Mash, she was the writer for that as well, too. And also with Barbara Hall, Madam Secretary. I'm sure you guys have seen that program. So it's many different people in the media industry whom we work with. And this is something that we can also bring to the table with Camacol Doral. And I believe we worked a brief affiliation, and we did some brief work with Door Cam, which was the, which was the Doral Contemporary Art Museum program as well, too. And we, and we are looking forward to working with them more in the future as well. You were talking about technology, Mr. Mayor. Camacol also has a technology, technological committee in which we are working with the, with fintech, financial technology, and banking. This is a new frontier of banking. At the same time, we have been working with committees, subcommittees regarding artificial intelligence, robotics, digital media, which is a multi-trillion dollar business, and as well as virtual reality and augmented realities. And all to, at what, at some point in time, we're like to congregate all this information together to aid Doral in becoming a smart city in the future, basically a technologically sophisticated, state-of-the-art city. So this is what Camacol brings to the table. And I would like to thank the audience for, for basically listening to us. And I invite all the audience to hopefully participate with in many of the efforts we'll be bringing to the table with Mayor Bermúdez, with Pete Dela Torres, with Manny Pila. So join us at Camacol, at Camacol Doral. Thank you.
Joe, thank you very much for that overview of Camacol. And I think all of you that are with us on this, on virtual call here today, has an idea of the resources and the experience and the global connections that Camacol has. And that's what we want to bring here to the city of Doral. And that's a very exciting opportunity for all of us. Right now, it's my pleasure to bring on to the program Manny Pila, who is the economic development coordinator for the city of Doral, who is every day, I think, Manny, you work like 22 hours a day, is that right, from what I've heard?
Oh, my wife did.
Because I know the mayor calls you like a 2 o'clock in the morning to see what's going on, right?
Sir, you know, a city never sleeps. So, you know, we have to do things when we can. It's a pleasure, actually, to work for the city.
All right. So Manny, share with us some of the things that I know that you're working on, that we're going to be working on together next few months, and definitely into 2021.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you for the opportunity, Pete. And of course, welcome to Mr. Chi and Mayor. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be part of this, of this forum. You know, in economic development, what we do, of course, is ultimately boils down to, you know, helping businesses to come here, to grow here, to thrive here. And there are many ways that we can do that, to facilitate that growth here of our, of our economy. And much of it has to do, of course, with assisting businesses with what they need, with providing education, information, and contacts. Communication is, is key. And of course, partnerships with organizations like this organization. And I just want to say, it's a pleasure to welcome Camacol Doral here to the city of Doral, an organization with so much history here in South Florida, really an important part of the growth of the business community here in South Florida for decades now, and an organization with contacts all over the world as the city of Doral has, and that can help really expand the scope and the reach of our businesses here, and also, you know, provide a And, and also, you know, provide a good landing for organizations from the region, from around the world that want to come here and experience what Doral has to offer, which is quite a bit, considering our great location, our, our great business community, our business-friendly government, of course. And of course, with the support of the mayor and the city council and the administration. We work hard here to, to do just that, help businesses large and small and work with many partners in the community, many of the partners that Mr. Chi mentioned, of course. We work closely with the Beacon Council and Miami-Dade County in many, many different ways, including we recently launched a regional rapid response RFP program for major corporations that are coming into the South Florida area to help them find space, to help them connect. We work, of course, with the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau as well closely. We have a lot of hotels. We have thirty hotels now in the city. And we work with them on a program to, to market those hotels and directly bring consumers through Expedia, through Sevent, right to, to book right here in the city of Doral. The city worked on this draw-up with GMCVB. And we have a successful program now with really small investment from the city and from the various hotel partners. But a pretty major scope, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's going into really promoting directly the city of Doral as a destination. But ultimately, we, we work with a lot of these organizations like Enterprise Florida as well, the county, the SBA, because they're all great partners to help our businesses, the SBDC at FIU and business organizations like Kamakol. They all have a scope and a way that they can help people. And many times communicating what's available to businesses, how to help them, where to go to find the information, how to make contacts. All those things are a very important part of connecting as an economy is really, you know, interconnected groups of individuals and people interacting with each other through goods and services. But it's connections, it's communications, it's relationships. So we are seeing, we continue to see a lot of interest here in the city. Now, clearly, coming into, into COVID, the city economically was really firing on all, on all cylinders. The lowest unemployment rate we'd ever had was one point four percent. And, and over thirty major developments going on in the city. And while by April and May, we're seeing, you know, kind of major changes on, in, on the economic condition of the city and the world. There are still many things that were going on and that are going on. That was really tremendous momentum coming into that with all those developments and many of the industries that we're going to be talking about, really growing and growing exponentially here in this young city, which is still developing and strongly developing. So, you know, some of the industries we're going to be talking about in the next meetings together, Pete and Mr. Chi, are some of those key industries. As you know, we'll be getting together again October thirteenth on hospitality and restaurants. Industries that have really been affected in a big way. That'll be October, that'll be October thirteenth. We're going to talk November twelfth, international trade and real estate. And, or which in many ways have been helpful buffers here through our, through our trade and logistics sector and our warehouses, which really continue to, to have a lot of demand and to be some bright spots in here. And healthcare and technology in December eighth, which is exploding here in Doral with, with Jackson West and Baptist Health, HCA, University of Miami Health, other medical facilities, kind of bringing major upgrades to those industries here. And I can tell you that we are seeing tremendous growth. And where the mayor said that, you know, some industries certainly are seeing huge growth here and coming to the city because of it. In, in pharma, in healthcare, in wellness, in technology manufacturing. We're very busy and businesses here are growing and growing their space here in the city of Doral. Some of the trends, international trends that, that are helping, of course, is a trend toward onshoring of manufacturing and distribution facilities. Low taxes here, COVID flight also into the residential area, helping us grow that way, excellent quality of life. So as the mayor mentioned, you know, some of the, some of the programs the city that is, is doing to try to encourage that growth, to try to help the, the businesses that need help and also help the businesses that are growing because they have different issues and different complications that they need help with. We're here to reach out and help them and to work with our partners like, like you to provide the information, to provide the contacts and to provide the opportunities for businesses. You know, the mayor mentioned the temporary outdoor dining permit to help our restaurants that will continue. Temporary business tax receipt program, so that businesses can have another way of pivoting, maybe having a secondary use for their business that if it fits the, their, the use of where they are. I mentioned extension of the deadline for renewal of business tax receipts through the end of the year to help businesses through the end of 2020 provide some relief. The assistance grants for businesses, that we'll be announcing all the information very, very soon, so stay tuned. That information will be coming out through our Public Affairs Department very, very soon. And partnerships with organizations like we, we talked about. And of course, this launch of this, the launch of Kamakol-Doral, which will bring more services and programming and connections to the Doral residents. I'd also like to mention that, you know, we're working with, with some of the tech giants, too. You know, we're working with Google on a Grow with Google program, webinar will be in Spanish. Trabajo diario. These will be Spanish-language webinars through Grow with Google to help businesses, Spanish-language businesses, use technology to grow here. And we're going to have four of those over the next few months coming up. And also, we're working with Dell. Right now, we're being featured on Friday by Dell and a Smart City Panel, Economic Development for Smart Cities, that'll be, that's a national panel. We're very happy to be, to have been featured in, in that company with Dell. We're also working, you mentioned smart city, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our smart city program, which I think is very important as well. Our smart city program, as a global smart city, you know, we have received certifications, ISO certifications from the World Council on City Data. Why is that important? Because it means that there's third-party certifications, data available on over a hundred different markers that show why the city of Doral is a smart city. And that is in many areas, in business, in technology, in demographics, the amount of patents. And it shows us information that we can share with major businesses that want to come here and with our own, so they can understand that where we are is, in fact, a major smart city that is competing on the world scale with Amsterdam and Dubai and London and Boston, and cities much older and more established than the city of Doral. City of Doral is punching above its weight category, to use a sports metaphor for you there. So we're, we're very pleased to, to continue to work, you know, I think through these trends. The trend will certainly be not only to continue to grow these sectors, but to really provide for, for our locals relief. And I think the best way is to encourage our locals to shop local, to spend local, to make sure we're supporting our local businesses, you know, when you can, keep it close to home, support those local businesses. And sign up, get your Spend Local card at thecityofdoral.com SpendLocal page. Register your business to offer a discount. We have over eighty-five right now, businesses offering discounts on there. And that's another way that we can help businesses to promote and help our people here to, you know, get a, get a break when they go out and support our, our local businesses. And the final thing I want to mention is that we have tremendous opportunities coming here through the city, through the Doral Parks Bond. A hundred fifty million dollar bond. It'll create jobs and increase quality of life for Doral for years to come. So there are many opportunities. So don't just look to do business in Doral. You can look to do business with Doral and, you know, check out the city of Doral's procurement. Sign up as a, as a vendor if you have something to offer for these huge projects that'll be unrolling here in the city over the next few years. So to wrap it up, I, I thank you for, for this initiative. Welcome Kamakol-Doral to the city of Doral. There's, I think, tremendous opportunities to grow as, I think, you're, you're right, this is the beginning. And, you know, we'll have, we'll be taking a look at these other sectors, inviting people to give us their feedback and hopefully help work together to continue to grow and connect our businesses to kind of a larger region. And I think Kamakol-Doral is very well-suited to, to do exactly that. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for, for coming here to the city of Doral with this new initiative.
Pete, we cannot hear you.
Sorry, Pete, we can't hear you.
It's technological problems. Maybe Manny, you want to go ahead and?
Yes, sir.
There we go. We're having difficulties hearing his, his volume, or Joe, either one.
Pete, we can't hear you, can't hear you, but perhaps?
There's some, there's some problem with Pete's audio.
I think there's some, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think there's some problem with Pete's.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let me, let me just, let me say one thing because now Joe said something in Spanish. I've got to say so, too. Muy feliz que Kamakol-Doral también está con nosotros. Le damos una gran oportunidad para una ciudad tan internacional como la nuestra, tener una organización internacional como Kamakol trabajando con nosotros directamente y de verdad es una, una gran oportunidad. Así que todo el mundo sabe que tenemos más de doce mil negocios, muchos que vienen del Caribe y Latinoamérica. Así que es una gran oportunidad para nosotros. So Joe, thank you. Muchas gracias.
El placer es de nosotros y el honor es de nosotros estar trabajando con ustedes, señor.
Manny, do we have any questions? I don't know, Pete's volume is back on, but do we have any questions from anybody? Or do you have any questions that you want to, issues that we want to go through that we want to discuss?
I do have a question about, about the other grant programs that the city does. And so I'm pleased to, to inform you that we will, we are continuing to do the facade grants. Correct. We're continuing to do the CBO grants for nonprofit organizations. And we also, for many years, have supported the PTAs here in, in the city. So we will continue to, to do those grants, of course, with the city council, the mayor and the administration. And hopefully in that, in that new budget that you'll have at the beginning of the year. So, yes, we will continue to, to have those grant programs. Stay tuned for dates about when we will be doing that. And also, please stay tuned and check our website as well and our social media to find out about the business assistance, small business assistance grants that are coming up, as well as a rental assistance grant that will be coming up very, very soon. That information is going to be coming out very soon. And it'll be very exciting information, as the mayor, as the mayor mentioned, and ways that we can help some of the businesses and some of the folks here in, in Doral throughout this, this, this difficult period. So we will be seeing that right at the beginning. We'll be kicking it off at the beginning of October.
Yeah, just to be clear, our fiscal year begins October first, so when we talk about the year, it's a little bit different than the, than the regular calendar. But Manny, how could they, what's your email so they can reach out to you if they have any questions?
Yes, sir. Well, they can reach me at economicdevelopment@cityofdoral.com or they can reach me at manuel.pila@cityofdoral.com. And at www.cityofdoral.com, you can find all sorts of information about the city's response to COVID, its various programs. And if you look up also our businesses tab on that same page, you'll find out about the grants that we have. You'll get a lot of great economic data there as well. And you can sign up for the Spend Local program for your business, as well as for, as you can download the, the card onto your phone. So you can use it and get some discounts here in the community and spread it around to your family and friends. Let them know that the Spend Local program is here. They should show out, that they should go out and take advantage of it and get their, their percentage at Dragonfly or at eighty-five other places that are offering great discounts here to the Spend Local program. It's right on to cityofdoral.com. That is where you'll find out. Well, of course, we'll be launching the, these grant programs very, very soon. And all that information will be available there. You'll be able to click through from the city's website to get through that. As soon as we have that information, you guys will be the first to know.
I've got a question for Joe or Pete. If a business would like to reach out to Kamakol-Doral to be a member of Kamakol-Doral, how do they do that?
Okay, they can go directly into our website, which is the main Kamakol website, which Kamakol-Doral is also included in there as well. And they can go directly over to the membership, click the membership section and click right into there. And the complete information will come up through there as well. I would also like to give Pete's email, just in case, and I'll give you my email as well for the public, so they can communicate with us. Pete is, is, email is Pete, just like his name, P E T E at bizforumgroup.com. Pete, we have to give you a Kamakol email. I, I believe we still owe you that. And then my, my email is joechi, J O E C H I, eight 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 three number eight, at kamakol.org. So you can contact us through, through those ways or through our website as well. We'll be very glad to help you. Also, one more thing, I believe that Pete was trying to announce the upcoming virtual meetings with Kamakol-Doral. They'll be the following month, on Tuesday, October thirteenth. Tuesday, October thirteenth, we'll be talking about hospitality and restaurants. And then following that, on November twelfth, Thursday, November twelfth, we will be talking about international trade and real estate, which is very important for Doral. And then the following month, in December, just before Christmas, December the eighth, on Tuesday, we'll be talking about healthcare and technology, a very promising field for Doral.
Can it, can you all hear me now or not?
Now we can hear you.
Okay, great, great. You know, I don't have much to add. The mayor, thank you very much for get, asking some great questions. Any more, any more questions, Manny, from the attendees?
No, sir. I think we're, we've, we've covered most of the questions. And I want to thank that, that came out today to, to take part in this and find us this information. I think there's going to be a, a lot of information coming out and great opportunities to, to share and benefit from this relationship. So thank you once again, gentlemen, for being part of this and coming out here to, to Doral.
And I, I want to thank, of course, Mayor Bermudas for being part of, of this, of this rollout, this launch. Of course, Joe Chi and Manny Pila. And again, I just want to reiterate to everybody that we are here to work together with you, to support you, the local business community. First of all, during a recovery period, but what we hope to do is accelerate that and get you all to that next level. And as soon as the coast is clear, as soon as we get the green light, we're going to start having face-to-face meetings. I think, I don't know, I don't even know how to handle that right now. It's kind of weird, but we've forgotten to do that. We've gotten so good with these virtual calls. But soon, and, and as soon as we get the, the green light, we'll start announcing folks getting together the old-fashioned way. Of course, responsibly with the masks and social distancing, we get all that. But I think everybody's hungry to, to start, you know, beyond, you know, we look good in the computers, but I think we look better in person. And, and that's what we want to do.
I wanted to touch upon that, Pete, because I do think that I want everybody to know that we will be looking forward to the time where we can all have a regular opportunity to meet. And because I know that that's important to many business people, even though we have an opportunity to have these types of events, that's critical. But, but I want to touch upon one point you mentioned, which is really important to the city, which is why I'm so excited about this partnership, to have an organization with such a lo, a long history of success. to have an organization with such a lo, a long history of success at the local, state and international level. Be here in Doral is really, and a true nonprofit that does it for the betterment of all the businesses is really a, something that has been a great result of, of both of you reaching out and, and bringing forth this idea and something we have been missing in the city of Doral. And I'd be remiss if I didn't reiterate that because it gives the city a great opportunity to partner with a historic nonprofit that has been a leader in the business industry in South Florida. Joe touched upon a couple of the entities that Kamakol has been a member of for so many years, which are critical. And the most recent one being obviously Mary Jimenez's team to get us back to new normal across the county. So I'm, I'm very excited, I can't wait till we have those meetings in person. So I, all of you, I hope that, and, and the other thing that's important, too, I think, Pete and Joe, is the upcoming webinars are going to be geared to those specific industries with very specific information on how the city is working with those industries. So very exciting times for us, and can't wait to see all of you in, in person.
And I'll tell you, just to, to add one more thing to that, our plans are to invite industry experts and industry leaders to be part of this conversation. And, and we're still working on getting that all finalized, but you're going to be hearing from the leaders of these industries that have the insight to what's going on. And, and that's really important. They're in the trenches every day and, and they're going to be able to give us, as I like to say, the real information of what's going on. And, and that's one of the things I think that you're going to be able to receive from Kamakol Doral. We're, we're, you know, we, we want to talk the truth, we want to talk and do things that are right for the business community. And sometimes, things that we talk about may not always be what we want to hear, but we need to hear because we want to get to the truth of what's going on. And that's the only way that we can really roll out collectively the right solutions so that we can prepare ourselves better, because down the road, there'll be something else that's going to hit us out of the blue. And we want to make sure that we're, we're, we're ready for that as much as possible there. So unless we have any other comments, I want to thank Mayor Joe Chi and Manny Pila for, for taking time in your incredibly busy days to be here today. And of course, all of the attendees that took their time to be with us here today. And, and we want to hear from you because, again, it's all of us working together to get the results that we're all looking for. So thank you very much, and God bless everybody.